This time, we'd like to welcome all listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded both video and audio. During the public comments section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address, and then we'll have five minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raised hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to speak to or address the board during the visitor comments section. Members of the public connected by phone need only press star nine to indicate that they wish to address the board in the visitor comments section. Those attending in person should sign up on the sign up sheet located near the entry to the boardroom. If you wish to speak with customer care regarding your account, please indicate that on the sign in sheet. Comments are limited to five minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions visitors to not disclose confidential account information or information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may also email or call a BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations for tonight's meeting may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors, and we will conduct the meeting accordingly. The following rules apply to the meeting. Every person in the room will act respectfully towards each other. Personal attacks and accusations toward any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue to the board only. We will determine staff's involvement. And attendees shall refrain from side discussions or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or other attendees at this meeting. If side discussion is necessary, please take it outside the boardroom. If any of the rules above are breached during the meeting, that individual is subject to removal from the boardroom. My name is Tom Groneman, Second District and Board President. Other members of the board and staff include Jeremy Ash, our General Manager, David Haley, Member at Large, Position Two, Stevie Wakes, Senior, First District, Brett Parker, Third District and Board Secretary, Mary Gonzalez, Member at Large, Position One, Rose Mulvaney Henry, Member at Large, Position Three, and Board Vice President, and Angela Lawson, Acting Chief Counsel. Please remember to put your phones on silent. Please also be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments made anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Angela, can we have roll call, please?
Roll call, Parker.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Groneman.
Here.
Haley.
Present.
Wakes.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Before I ask for a motion to approve the regular session agenda of October 1, are there any comments on the agenda?
Please move the approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, before I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda of the October 1, 2025 meeting, are there any comments, any items that need to be removed?
Please move the approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
This time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our General Manager, Mr. Jeremy Ash.
Thank you, Mr. President. First up tonight, we have Gabby's Customer Care Team here, and I think Gabby Freeman is going to come up and deliver this information for us. Welcome, Gabby.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Gabriella Freeman, the Director of Customer Care, and tonight I'm excited to walk you through the strides we've made in improving how we serve our customers and how those efforts align with our broader mission of reliability, transparency, and trust. So our key topics tonight will be the Customer Care Data Points, Training Initiatives, Process Updates, Customer Advisor, and Future Projects. So on our data points and metrics, we've completed 873 lobby appointments. Our paperless billing enrollment is above 22,000. Our Net Meter accounts are currently at 542. Flex Pay remains steady at about 1,281 customers. MyMeter users is above 33,000, and we've currently set up 11,174 arrangements this year. And the $1 million right there, that number is what we have currently set up on arrangements, but year to date it's been 5 million. And our in-person appointments, so here you see the total of all the appointments that have been set, whether they were resolved in person before or no-shows, and then the appointment types. So we've had a total of 231 canceled appointments, and normally an appointment will be canceled because the customer, their concern's already been resolved via phone or email. They made an appointment to sign for service, but they also send in their paperwork, so that was resolved before the appointment was necessary, or the customer canceled the appointment themselves. If you look around the reasons, it'll say they had a prior appointment or something came up and they weren't able to come in. The total number of no-shows this year is 366 customers, and these are customers that set up an appointment but did not come in. So in August, we started manually tracking customers that left a message on the in-person appointment line, but after speaking to them, we did not have to set up an appointment because we were able to resolve the concern, and those calls totaled 120. So the majority of those customers, they needed to set up a payment arrangement, and they just weren't aware they could do it by phone, so we transferred them over to that line, or they needed help registering for MyMeter or walking through a portion of MyMeter, so we were able to assist them with that over the phone. So then you'll see the most requested type of appointment is going to be to start service, followed by billing questions, and then transfer service. Okay, so as a strategic investment in our frontline team, we partnered with Ulysses Learning to enhance our customer service. So we chose Ulysses because it aligns with our values of empathy, clarity, and accountability. So their training initiatives focus on areas of acknowledging customers' needs and emotion, gaining control of the call, probing for questions, providing clear solutions, gaining acceptance, recapping the next step, and then invite additional questions. And the impacts it makes, it's going to increase first call resolution rate, reduce average handling time, and it's also going to boost employee confidence. So the goal of doing this initiative wasn't just better conversations, we do want better outcomes. We wanted our reps to feel confident navigating complex calls while making customers feel heard. So all the reps have been trained, and since this is new to the teams, we are building layer by layer. So we started with the acknowledgement statement, now we're filling in with the gain control of the call. And the reps have provided feedback that using the acknowledgement statement early in the call, they saw that it diffused attention and it built trust with the customer. So the training has been very well received by the teams. And next, I'd like to highlight our language translation services. So we're breaking the language barriers to serve every customer. So the previous limitation, Spanish was BPU's only non-English language, and now with the Proprio Service, that's a company that we utilize, they have 300-plus languages available for us. So the way it works, if somebody calls in and they speak another language, you can ask what that language is, we'll call the Proprio Service, state what language we need, and then a representative will come on the line and translate. Field workers can also call in, or they can do a video call if they have a tablet if necessary. So we've gone from serving bilingual needs to truly being multilingual. We know every customer deserves to be understood and supported regardless of the language. So Proprio was made utility-wide, available utility-wide on July 21, and since then, the service has been used to assess, sorry, assist 734 customers. Seventeen of those was through video, and the remainder was by phone. The majority of the contact has been used for Spanish-speaking customers, but we have also assisted customers that speak Burmese, Swahili, Haitian, Creole, and Persian. So one of the phone reps shared a story with me that they were on a call with a Burmese customer who utilized the Proprio Service, and at the end of the call, the customer shared with the rep that he really appreciated being to call in and speak in his own language, and he told her he was going to tell his family and friends that they could call into BPU and get their billing questions answered. So the rep let me know that that was a morale booster for her because she felt empowered to help more people more effectively. So next, I'll dig over some processes. So we did a different approach this year, and we met with everybody collaboratively as long, as far as the frontline team, so we've never involved them when we have discussions on how we're going to process certain things within the utility as far as in customer care. So we wanted to hear what they were seeing and experiencing, and we wanted to place equal priority on the customer and the employee experience. So we did review several processes, but one of the most sensitive areas that they highlighted was the bereavement account process, which you guys also know as the deceased process. So we did realize it needed to be more compassionate and less burdensome. So now, when a customer passes away, we simplify the steps for updating the account information. We update the account information and allow the families to have 30 days to submit their paperwork, so this reduces stress for grieving families. The account number stays the same, so that means all the billing history, including if they're on automatic payments, level payment, or on payment arrangement, that stays intact. So there's no need to start over or reconfigure any settings, and the team felt that this update to this specific process was a big win for BPU and the customer. And then looking to the future, so you know, earlier in the slide, when we were going over the in-person appointments, we did see that the most appointments requested in the top three are starting service or transferring service. So we do have a current challenge with that because we have manual document submission. So we're reimagining the way how customers can start or transfer their service, and we want to make it faster and easier. So with the new process that we're coming up with, it will be a self-validation where customers are going to verify their identity online, and if they pass validation, the services will be set up with no paperwork required. So this should dramatically reduce delays and improve the customer experience for those who need service quickly. So we expect this to be in place by second quarter of 2026. And then lastly, we have our interactive voice response IVR system launch. So previously, well, not previously, with the service we have now, we only have self-service options in English. With the new IVR, we're going to have self-service options in English, Spanish, and Mong to reflect the diversity of our service area, and there's also intelligent call routing that ensures customers get to the right place faster, which is going to reduce frustration and improve resolution times. We're also introducing real-time feedback surveys that are going to be sent out by phone or text right after the customer speaks with the representative, and the survey will include questions regarding the service they received and how they were treated by the representative. So this feedback is really going to help us identify coaching opportunities, celebrate employee wins, and then continuously improve the customer experience. Now, the IVR is going to roll out in phases, and it will start this month in October, and it will be completed by the end of 2025. So on the last page, you'll see how you can connect with us. You can go to our website, contact customer service at 913-573-9190, or you can also reach us via email at cuservice@bpu.com. And then lastly, I'd like to introduce to all of you tonight our Customer Advisor. This is Carrie Glover. So Carrie has been instrumental in building bridges with local agencies, gathering intake details and eligibility criteria and types of assistance offered. So this allows our team and our customer, sorry, this allows our team to guide customers more effectively, reducing confusion and improving access to help. She's also taken a hands-on approach with complex cases, looking for creative solutions and alternative support options. And then to strengthen these partnerships, Carrie has visited 12 agencies in person, and we're using the feedback from those visits to shape topics for our lunch and learn that we're going to hold later this month. So we plan to spotlight key programs with the agencies like Flex Pay, The Language Line, and How to Start Service to ensure the agency partners are equipped with support for their customers with clarity and confidence. And then Carrie's outreach has also gone beyond the office. She attended an event that Evergi had for utility assistance with customers with disconnect notices. She participated in the back-to-school night, and she'll also be attending the USD 500 College Fair later this month, where she plans to network with agency representatives who serve our diverse base. Carrie's only been in this role for about 90 days, and she is off and running, and we're happy that she's part of the team. So I just want to let all you know that, you know, all the work that we've done, none of this progress happens without a shared effort. It's a result of us listening to our customers, empowering our employees, and working together across departments. We've had support from IT, from communication, from HR, from leadership in the board, and I appreciate your ongoing support, and I feel that together, we're shaping a utility that reflects the values of our community and the future we all want to build. You guys have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, really, Ms. Gabby Freeman, for the update that you brought. Welcome too, Carrie.
Thank you.
Welcome. It's this ambitious opportunity that you have to bring us through. Well, it's no secret, obviously, I do appreciate the report with the, regarding the lobby. As you know, I'm alone, probably on this board and anywhere for making sure that the lobby is more accessible. And I look at the numbers that you did bring back. I don't think that anyone that makes, goes through the trouble to line up an appointment really wants to miss it. I mean, some stark numbers there, it seems like at least two, on average, a day don't keep the appointment to come to the lobby or more. And I imagine that if you go through that process, you really do have something you want to resolve. Do you know if there's a trickle down from those who made an appointment to be in the lobby, then didn't keep it, but were able to somehow have it, whatever the issue is, to have been resolved or?
It could have been, and we haven't looked into that, but I definitely could, because right now, when you were saying that, I was wondering the same thing, like was it that they had just resolved their issue and they didn't go online to cancel it themselves? So then when they didn't show up, we marked it as a no-show.
Yeah. It's been my experience from time to time that I come here, honestly, Gabby, still, that there are people that are still coming, tapping on the glass, visiting with our security, trying to find some directions and leaving without it resolved. I do want to open the plea. We'll be going through the budget process again, and as you look at ways to innovate and ways to be more customer-friendly and accessible, to look at a way that we might have access to at least a member, a team member available for the lobby for those that are doing walk-in. We're almost there. It's so much better with this system than it's been in years past. It's been said that the enemy of better is best, so we don't want to take anything away from what is going, but we still see these numbers of so many people who are having an issue that in person can be resolved. A lot of people don't have the tech savvy. I'm one of them, and just want to have that human interaction regarding the clear livability aspect of having electric and a water service. So I'm asking you again, as you strive, you and Ms. Carrie, is it?
Yes.
Strive to continue to make customer service, which is the benchmark, frankly, as far as I'm concerned, to make the lobby open, to just have the lobby open for certain hours. You've got the other areas to augment it, like the language, you know, the translation, that used to be a problem. How do we have people to translate those that'll walk in off the street? Got that handled, but just to have someone accessible between regular business hours who can just walk in, and I hope that can be done without too much greater expense with existing team personnel and to see how that might be integrated to the great work you're already doing.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your suggestions. We are working on things, so yes, thank you for that feedback.
Thank you. And again, welcome, Carrie.
Stevie?
Thank you. Again, thank you, Abby, and thank you as well. Welcome to the team. And I kind of want to go back to what I stated previously, is that, that I believe that we can operate efficiently and effectively without the lobby. That's my personal belief. However, when other items are not where they should be, and you said the IVR, and I'm just frustrated. I'm frustrated because it's not where we, our IVR's not there yet, and we've got to wait and wait and wait and wait. We tell our customers, wait, 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 wait. They've been waiting a long time.
Yes.
And it's just frustrating for me to represent them and then have them say, well, I called customer service and I waited on the line. How long is the wait time now, the average wait time now for calls?
The average, so actually, that has increased. It normally runs about five minutes for the wait time, but we did have some promotions. Somebody was promoted from the team that took my position. Carrie was promoted, so we did have some movement actually within our division, which left us short staffed. So currently, we have a staff daily of about nine to six people. Actually, Jeremy and Abby took the initiative. When we put the job out, we actually only needed three, but since we had people moving, we figured we would have movement in the area where we would need additional two. So they did approve us to get the five before they bid on the positions.
You said they, they approved who? Who was that?
Jeremy and Abby. Yes, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to pick on Jeremy.
So it wasn't any extra staffing. We knew there'd be movement, and there was. So that just allowed us to get the five in faster versus where we had had a three, then do another two. So we have three of them listening to calls this week, and they should start taking their calls next week, and then the other two will also start next week. So that'll be an additional five people on the phone, which will really help with the calls.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Most of the time, when we have internal promotions and movements, it's just sort of a trickle-down, right? And so Abby and I had a conversation about how do we get ahead of that and not have this thing linger, and so we, it wasn't really a gamble, it was sort of a calculated risk, and it shook out how it should have, and it was able to get, get their team all the help on the same sort of timeline to backfill all at once and not have that staggered backfill.
Thank you.
So thank you for your support and speaking up first, but yes, we are aware, but we are working on it, so thank you.
Brett?
I just want to say it's encouraging some of the progress we're making. I know, especially in terms of the accessibility of those in-person appointments, a lot of steps have been taken to make that more available. And Carrie, welcome aboard. I think your position is really exciting. There's just a difficult landscape for folks who are struggling to be able to access all of the resources available, and I think having someone who has that focus to proactively help them through there makes a big difference, difference for, for our community, so I'm excited about that as well. Thanks.
Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. Carrie, welcome aboard. Gabby, can you just go over real quick what the parameters are on the lobby today, on the in-person appointments in the lobby?
So we do have appointments Monday through Friday, and they start, the first appointment's at 9:15, and the last appointment is at 4:15, and we allot 30 minutes for each appointment time.
Okay. And so you can make an appointment online, and you can also call a special number to make an appointment, correct?
Correct. Yes, so you can do it online, or you can call the phone number directly, and then that's when somebody will call you back to schedule the appointment. And again, if they can resolve it over the phone, they'll get it resolved so that they don't have to come in. And like I said, 120 of them had been resolved since July, so that was a pretty good amount that avoided the customer from having to come in.
Great, thank you.
To follow up kind of on the question, so would it be possible to have a same-day appointment if someone calls in? I'm thinking if someone were to call during regular business hours and perhaps be seen, is there a lag time that you have? Or, I know appointments are scheduled, but is that ever possible that someone might be able to be seen almost immediately if there's no schedule?
So at this point, actually, most of the times are filled up when I, because I do look at it in the morning, and we mostly have every appointment slotted for, except maybe one or two a day, if that. If not, they're all slotted for. So it does allow you to set up until the day before, but like if you were to go on there right now, I think the people that were doing the callbacks told me that they were out to the seventh already. So it is, that's the first available appointment right now.
Or in person would be the seventh, so basically a week out would be 41 could?
Yes. So then, if we could do other things, you know, we could definitely go into that, but we don't know if a customer's not going to show up, and then some customers do come, but most of the time when they come, it's more to do with their payments, or they're having issues with the kiosk machine, and then the cashiers will come out and assist them. Not to say that they don't have other questions, because sometimes they'll come down here to make payments, so then we direct them to the kiosk machine or to put the payment in the drop box, or sometimes they'll visit us because they're trying to pay at another site, like to pay their electrical engineering fees, and then we direct them to pay online, because I don't think they take those payments anymore if we review. So most of the time, we do have some customers that'll come wanting to sign for service, but it's not probably as many as you think. More of them are just having issues making the payments at the kiosk machine.
And not to belabor this, what I deal with most are people that have been interrupted, service interruption, and what can they do, who can they go to to have the immediacy available to get, you know, usually the lights back on?
I will say that, Mr. Haley. If their service has been interrupted, I would encourage them to make sure we have their phone number updated. They can call in, and we can update that, or they can do it via MyMeter, and we'll actually send them text notifications, and the text notification, if they're disconnected, they will let them know the day before that you're scheduled for disconnect tomorrow for this amount, so the customer can pay then, and then they won't be disconnected. Or if they are not able to, and they pay later that day, as long as they pay the amount that they're disconnected for, they'll automatically be reconnected, so it's not even necessary for them to call in. Now, I know they probably do want to know because they want their service back on, so I do understand the urgency of it, but if you just let them know if they pay the amount that's requested on the text message, then their services will automatically reconnect.
Okay, and that number would be the one you provided at the, is that the best number, the one?
For customer care, for a reconnect or for?
Yes, the 9190?
Yes, if they want their service reconnected, they can call that number. If not, as long as they pay enough, the service will reconnect on its own.
And so that's only monitored, what, eight to five or nine to five?
Oh, no, the phone lines are open from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, that 9190 number.
Seven to six. And what about the online? Is that the same hour, seven to six roughly, that they're monitored? Cust service?
Yes. So that'll be the same time.
Seven to six as well for the online. Okay, all right, thank you.
Gabby, could you talk about what happens if a customer calls light trouble after hours and they make a payment, and how they're able to help them?
Oh, yes. So if a customer, even if they pay after we close at 6 o'clock, they can call the light trouble department, and then they can also verify the payment and send the services out to get reconnected, so they can make sure that service request gets initiated.
Well, thank you, Gabby, and we know for a fact that Carrie's position is already making an impact. We had an issue this morning. I thought I was an early riser, but I got an email at about 4:40 this morning from a Gabby and I and some of the other team members attended a community event this morning. I shared that email with Gabby at about 8:15, and prior to 9 o'clock, Carrie had taken care of it, left a voicemail for the customer, and so that's something we haven't had before. And so when somebody is, is having an issue and being able to have that dedicated person to just focus on that issue and work it to resolution right then is something we're really excited about.
That was a position that I advocated for, for a number of years, and so I really appreciate the fact that we finally got, got her on board, got somebody on.
Well, thank you again, Gabby and Carrie, Abby, for all the work your teams are doing to improve how we reshape customer care. Next up, we've got Mr. Jordan from United Way, and I'm not sure if he's going to handle the presentation by himself or if he's got some help.
I always, I always have an ally, but no, I'll be handling it by myself today.
Well, welcome, and we're looking forward to hearing from you. We kicked off this week our, our drive, so very exciting.
Wonderful. It's good to be here in front of everybody, and please, mic check me if I wind up getting drifting a little bit away. It's a little short for me, but it's good to be here with everybody again tonight to talk about not only the partnership between BPU and United Way, but the incredible work that we're being able to do in the community and how it really is sorely needed. You know, we do a lot of work together expansively in terms of the employee giving campaign, the board, the board support that funds two different utility programs. I mean, I can tell you that it is desperately needed in Wyandotte County. You know, to remind everybody, you know, to level set, you know, Wyandotte County, again, across the metro, does have one of the highest concentrations of poverty. About 17.5% of the population is at or below 100% of the federal poverty level. One thing, though, that we've understood with United Way is that the poverty level in itself is an estimate of people who are really struggling, but it also doesn't tell you how many people are above that line but still struggling to make ends meet. We've developed a methodology called ALIS, which stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained But Employed, and if you want to learn more, you can go to unitedforalice.com and you can, or dot org and look it up. But basically, this measures the number of people who are above that 100% of the federal poverty line but really aren't making enough in the county that they're living in to make ends meet. In Wyandotte County, there's about 10,000 households that are below poverty, but there's another 20,000 households that are above poverty but still below that ALIS threshold. Combined, that's about 30,000 households, which is, again, 48%, or roughly half the county that is not making enough in order to make ends meet. The best I can give you right now is assure you that if you look launch totally back to 2005, like, and through the Great Recession, honestly, the numbers are getting better, slowly but surely, but that's not enough for folks that are struggling. And when half the county and half the households are in this dynamic, it really means that we need that level of investment in our community more than just what we can do. It has to be broad based, but there's also a lot of support that we provide, especially through the utility assistance programs, which are a great stabilizing force. For two thousand and twenty-five, the board made five hundred thousand dollars available. Two hundred and eighty thousand of it went to the utility assistance program and two hundred and twenty thousand of it goes to support the, goes to support the hardship assistance program. And I'll go into more detail on kind of the difference between the two programs here in a second. Historically, the board has approved a hundred and five thousand for utility assistance. That usually had been tethered to the United Way Employee Giving Campaign here at BPU. But the board had always understood is that campaign ebbs and flows, keep it at a hundred and five thousand because we don't want to cut that money. And then same thing, a hundred and twenty thousand for hardship. In the last couple of years, there's been the ability to add additional money that BPU has been able to pull it into the budget and that money has been sorely needed. The agencies are incredibly grateful for it. We've been incredibly grateful for it. Because quite honestly, it makes a huge difference in our ability to continue to help families that are in need. As one reminder, you know, United Way has also been able to leverage additional funds. When I put together the presentation, I kind of thought we might be in another federal government shutdown, but I was really hoping we wouldn't be. But back in two thousand and nineteen, during the last shutdown, we were able to receive a large grant from United Way Worldwide that led to about thirteen thousand dollars in BPU bill payments for federal workers who were displaced during the last shutdown. We advocated hard and heavy during the COVID pandemic in order for ARPA as well as CARES Act funding and put a significant amount of money into, you know, the ability to pay for BPU customer bills. And recently, we've had a private foundation that's come forward to offer a debit card program that they're running through United Way to assist households, either through agencies or through direct services we do, that maybe are falling in the gaps and aren't eligible for all programs. And actually, I got a new report this morning because we can track the vendor IDs. And that has led to since April, the payment of about twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars in BPU customer bills. So there's a lot of ways where we're able to layer the funding that we have together in order to try to make a difference where we can with what we've got. The utility assistance program, again, funded by the board with, you know, the, and again, had been traditionally tethered to the match, the employee giving. But this year there was an additional allocation. It does fund for the allowable expenditures are only BPU services. There's no other utility that is currently covered. One big change for this year that we were really happy about was that it used to be set to a hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level and it has now increased to two hundred percent of the federal poverty level, which is close to what that ALIS threshold is for most folks in Wyandotte County. And we're really happy because we heard from a lot of our agency partners that they were having folks that clearly are struggling to make ends meet, but they were just missing on that income threshold. And this has allowed a lot more flexibility and we're really happy that this change was able to be made. Assistance cannot exceed five hundred dollars. A client is eligible for assistance once every twelve months. And we use a shared data platform called MAC Link in order to track assistance to ensure that clients are only getting helped once, to ensure program rules, that payments are going to BPU customers. We work with seven partner agencies across Wyandotte County. We work with them and we assess not only their ability to spend from year to year, but also their overall capacity with the number of calls and the number of outreach they're getting. I don't think it shocks anybody to know that supply does not equal demand, that these agencies get hundreds and hundreds of calls every day. They do the best they can, including having some very tense calls with stressful individuals who are maybe putting it on them that they can't help the bill, but they're still doing the best that they can with the resources they have in order to provide assistance. But this is that way we mobilize a network of partners in order to help people in our community. These are the cost breakdown for how the administration of the program works with the amount of money that is provided to the community for assistance, the amount that we retain for administration. And I detail kind of how that administration, what that really means, including the payment dispersment, the recruitment and training, managing the shared data platform, adjusting funding and monitoring the agencies, promotion of the program, our IT costs, as well as recommendations around improvements, all the things that kind of made this program run from year to year. We're at about two million dollars invested in Wyandotte County Utility Assistance since two thousand and nine. And that's about eleven thousand payments to, you know, recently about nine hundred households a year that helped. The average bill amount and the average assistance amount still is around three hundred dollars. And that's what it usually takes, usually probably layering together the individual paying some amount and then the assistance kind of coming in as sort of the last dollars in to help clear. But obviously the agencies do have the ability to go up to five hundred dollars. The hardship program is the safety net for the safety net. We often know that there are a lot of times where individuals maybe are not experiencing or they have like a steady income, but all of a sudden they have that one-time unforeseeable expense that comes through and it creates a major disruption. Or for whatever reason, they have trouble demonstrating their income, but they can demonstrate another form of hardship. And so the administration and the payment of the hardship program supports a part-time case manager. This individual works at the Metro Lutheran Ministry Office. This is down off of Seventh and Sandusky. She's a Wyandotte County native. She also bilingual, English and Spanish speaking. And she has been administering this program for several years and is the one who winds up being the person who takes in the calls, works with the client to look at through the documentation, ensure that the documentation meets the requirements that are set and then does the dispersment of assistance back and makes the commitment on the ultimate account. Again, their work is incredibly important and we're really happy, you know, they usually are able to do a lot of their intake and a lot of the paperwork virtually. One of the, one of the few benefits that we have out of the pandemic, but she is physically located in Wyandotte County if somebody does need an in-person service. And then we obviously, we track all payments in MAC Link so that we have the same shared data platform so we can look at overall history of the individual. And then we have the other elements that we work with. And in particular, connecting with community partners is one I want to spend time on. We had a chance to talk with Carrie right when she came on board, which was wonderful. But it's really good to remind a lot of our health system partners, our FQHCs, kind of the availability of the program so that they know as they have social workers, community health workers, that they're able to say, you can help them with their paperwork to get things lined up. Recently, my colleague went and met with KCKPD's Victim Services Unit and talked to them because we have a lot of individuals that come to us, particularly individuals who have experienced domestic violence, which is a situation when they're getting out of it, it's really difficult to have all your paperwork. So it really works to help have that relationship with KCKPD so that they know what the criteria for the program are. So if that individual needs help with their bill, then we can hopefully expedite that situation. As a reminder, the money is held internally by BPU to make payments and commitments on payment accounts. We allocate the money monthly based on kind of what we see as the demand. I don't think it surprises anybody that August, September, October tend to be our highest volume months. Because we had additional money this year, I'm happy to say that actually our spending as of September sixteenth meant that we surpassed all of the money that we had spent the previous year. So the demand is there. We're pushing the dollars. We're doing our best to make sure that we're verifying and helping clients and customers as they come through. We do hold money for individuals that in case we run out of money one month, that maybe have had like, have never missed a payment, never been late. And we have that as kind of our excellent payment history program. And if an individual comes through and they're like, I've never missed a bill, I haven't been late, I need help, there's always something there for them if they've had that one-time emergency. Again, similar kind of criteria that we've had for other programs, but you know, this one, you have to have had BPU service for six months. And you have to have one or more of the following hardship criteria. This year, the big change was, and again, I'm very thankful that we were able to provide feedback, but was around our crises with older adults. We've had way too many individuals who are on fixed income, are experiencing high levels of economic vulnerability and then are usually having compounding issues when it comes to their health. And it was getting difficult necessarily to qualify them through the other criteria. And so one addition was to have older adults. They have their own kind of pot that we can make sure that, yeah, we have a process for making sure you're qualifying. I can share earlier this week, and I talked to our employees this morning a little bit about an individual who has called us on earlier this week. And they're eighty-one years old. They're still working part-time. They have a series of health issues and they were missing work the last couple of weeks because they had hip surgery. Like there's not a whole lot else they can really do. And so that is one where it's like, yes, this is why the hardship program exists. It's there to support you. It's there to make sure that you're not getting disconnected and that you don't have to wait to get assistance. Again, allowable expenditures are for BPU services. They have to provide a, you know, copy of the bill. We have, we can obviously work with customer care. If they don't have the physical copy, that's always been a great relationship. Assistance cannot exceed five hundred dollars. They're eligible for assistance every twelve months and we track it in MAC Link. You know, since two thousand and thirteen, which is pretty close to when I started with United Way, we have provided over a million dollars in assistance for about three thousand commitments. The program helps roughly three hundred, give or take, a year. And the average bill payment is a little bit higher than the three hundred, about three twenty-five. We do wind up spending just a touch more sometimes on these cases, usually because they have more in arrears. And oftentimes there's a, you know, we have, we owe seven hundred, we can pay three, can you pay the remainder with the hardship program if you qualify? I mean, that's how a lot of, you know, client cases get handled. So again, just kind of the high level, here is the funding amount that has been made available, the amount that has been provided for assistance and then the costs that have been broken down in terms of the support that you all are able to provide for these programs to operate, really serving not only two different programs, you know, about five hundred thousand dollars handling over, you know, probably about eleven hundred, you know, commitments to payment across Wyandotte County this year. Bigger picture again, to pull it back to the support for United Way though. You know, one of the ways that we've always believed that you, you know, you have to provide support for the community is letting people know what's out there. You can have the best program in the world and if nobody knows about it, then it's a problem. And that's why two-one-one exists. And we operate two-one-one, which is a three-digit contact center that is twenty-four seven. And we had about six thousand five hundred calls from Wyandotte County last year and about nine thousand requests for assistance. Probably not surprising that housing is the greatest demand, that then utilities are usually right there. And we maintain a database of a thousand agencies, two thousand sites, seven thousand programs. And we try to get that information, like not only here's what the program is, but here's the eligibility criteria, here's how you apply, here's what you need to know in order to do it. Again, it's a place to start if you've never had, had to get assistance before, if you don't know what you're, you know, really trying to navigate or if the agency you used to went to is no longer there and you need to look for something else. Lastly, I'll say, you know, we've made significant and innovative programs that I'm happy to support. The Family Empowerment Initiative oftentimes impacts BPU customers. This is a partnership where we work with KCK Public Schools and Avenue of Life to work with McKenney Vento families so that we can enter, do that two-generation approach where we stop evictions. Because if a kid gets evicted, they wind up moving schools. There's an ample amount of evidence that it ultimately impacts their long-term learning, aside from being destabilizing for the family. We're really happy with that program's ability to basically layer in money for case management and emergency services to keep that family stabilized. About ninety-five percent of those program participants do not wind up making a change when they are in the FEI program. That means they don't move out of their house. The kid stays in the school in which they were already in. The debit card program, which I've mentioned, is foundation funded, but has been a great way for us to have flexible funding. We're able to deploy quickly. When we had flood damaged homes recently, back in the spring, we were able to roll out additional assistance to a couple of agencies through this. And I think we have about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars through the debit card program that's gone to Wyandotte County residents. And then we're obviously funding dental insurance program and enrollment through Delta Dental and about sixty-plus agencies that are serving Wyandotte County residents to a total of about four million dollars in investment. So that's our partnership and I appreciate any questions. Sir?
Thank you again for your presentation. Who manages MAC Link?
MAC. So MAC is the Mid-America Assistance Coalition. MAC Link is the shared data platform.
Okay.
It's a KC-based nonprofit that kind of runs that sort of shared platform and other services.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. I personally, when I was growing up, when I, when I was young and in need of, of the services that United Way provided, Metro Lutheran Ministry provided assistance to me personally twice in my life. And I'm very appreciative of the service when it was available to me. So I know what great work you do. And so we really appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions, Senator? Do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Todd, for coming in and, and going through the program with us. And then I think today, actually Dennis's team and the rest of the folks working on the campaign kicked off things and we're looking, we're looking forward to all that, that it brings this year. So thanks for the partnership and thanks for helping our community. And, and thanks to the board, the last couple of years have been able to reallocate some unused funding at the end of the year to, to provide more help. So thanks to everybody involved in that and your willingness to, to do that with those dollars. Chris, do we have anybody signed up? I know we got an email request and is that the only one or you? Okay. Thank you. First up, is it Anna Barber? You wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record and you'll have five minutes to speak.
My name is Anna Barber and I live at nineteen seventeen North Fourteenth Street. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My question is, back in May of this year, there was a piece on KS HBTV about the data center coming out to one hundred and thirty-first street in parallel. And I haven't been keeping way up to date on it, but I've been informed that it's going, if that data center goes into operation, it's going to require thousands of gallons of water and it creates a lot of heat and whatnot and a lot of electricity. And so my question is kind of twofold and that is the money that's going to be required to run that data center, how is it going to impact the residents who are on KCK BPU receiving utilities? How's that going to affect our everyday bills and costs? And also where can I get a copy of like an environmental impact study that was done by BPU or whomever as far as this data center is concerned? Thank you.
Thank you. To answer your questions, one, the, the project is still, I think, in the process with the business development at the unified government. So really that's where it's at. We don't have any agreement with any data centers today. When it comes to the environmental impact study, the developer would have all of that. Again, without there being a development agreement and without there being an actual project coming, we don't have any information because we haven't engaged in, in any of the negotiation with them. We're aware and we've been asked to provide certain capabilities, but we don't have any of their finalized agreements because there isn't one. Next up, Ty Gorman. Ty, you know the, state your name and address and you got five minutes.
Thank you very much. Ty Gorman, two eight four three Perkwood Boulevard, Ben six six one zero four KCK. And I don't know about you, but that United Way presentation affected me and I'm going to have to go back through the video to really look at all those details and compare those to the reality that roughly half the households aren't able to make ends meet. And I arrived here the last Trump administration where assistance failures, disconnects of power in BPU and Evergy and Everywhere skyrocketed. And over the next few years, the destruction of public services and the, the utility disconnects are going to skyrocket again. The services and public sector safety net for struggling seniors and low-income families are going to be gutted in a way that's unprecedented in modern times. And the neighbor, my neighbors in northeast KCK, the communities that I work with and talk to have high expectations and high hopes for local electeds, local government to be the last line of defense as much as possible for us to maintain some malivability, some healthy homes, ability to stay in our homes for those half of the people in KCK who are struggling. The, you know, we need plans. We need local plans. We need local coalitions. We need electeds with a heart to fight that fight for our lives against these impossible costs that people are facing, as well as the pollution that is also being exacerbated by failed federal and state governments. We have a high energy burden in KCK, partially because of the, you know, the, the issues that United Way talked about. And we have one of the, one of the last remaining coal plants that are located in urban area that causes pollution is very costly. But on the other hand, solar and storage, customer-side resources like efficiency, still inexpensive, still the best solutions. Evergy in their meeting today for low-income efficiency just showed that their programs pass cost-benefit tests for low-income communities. Their efficiency programs are still the first thing to focus on. And they need to be scaled up drastically in BPU and, and Evergy. United Way said we need long-term sustainable program in addition to what we're able to do with what we have. And our partner agencies are understaffed and overwhelmed already. In other words, we need UG and BPU to have a plan for the future that keeps utility bills and pollution from destroying health and lives. And this is not the time for local officials to be cautious, to wait for help from anywhere. None is coming. BPU needs a cost-effective and strategic utility agreement plan and utility expansion plan for any economic development opportunities that get sent our way over the next couple of years. And that has to be done as soon as possible. I believe this board has the heart and the, the desire to serve their constituents. And I believe you can build on last year's integrated resource plan and provide an affordable and healthy utility plan to help BPU. to help BPU customers in these next few difficult years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, is there anybody online with their hand raised?
Yes, sir, there is. Ms. Easley, I'm going to enable your ability to speak. You'll need to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Jay Easley and I stay in Wyandotte County. And I'm, I wanted to bring a couple of things to the board. I came on a little bit late and I know that they were talking about face to face contact. And I have called BPU a couple of times and had waited for them to call me back and I never got a call back. And there is no way to just come into the office. So it has been quite an experience just trying to get someone in person. And the only reason why I did during the case that I'm about to explain is because I knew of people that were actually worked there. And I had to contact several of them just to get somebody in person. Because now you have to go online to set up to get your system together, to actually get on to BPU. You have to do it all online. And I get it should be an option, but I just don't think it should be the only option. So I'm agreeing with, I believe David Haley said something about having more contact with people for these changes. And I just really think that we should try to find a way to implement that. And then I want to also talk about the fact that I did a convert to landlord twice. I paid a seventy five dollar fee to do it back in May of twenty twenty two. And for some reason, the ball was dropped and I had to pay another fee back in twenty twenty four every time I got new tenants. And it's just like now I have another new tenant and the ball was dropped yet again. And now I'm experiencing water damage and I did put in a claim and it was really quickly denied. And the reason for the denial to me is really unclear because the information that they gave of somebody like me that's from the public, I can't read it. I don't know what those meters mean. I don't know how to understand it. So when I charge my tenant for that water damage and they can't read it either, they're saying you can't prove to me that I did this. So I'm really hoping that the lady that I spoke with, Kate, and then I also attached it to, I think it's Jeremy, on the email that I sent, I had been trying to send this email for a couple of days. But because all of the detailed information that I have is over twenty five pages, it was hard for me to actually send it. So I just sent a portion of it. And if we did have a way to kind of walk in and give documentation to people, it would be better. Because if I do have to fax that information, it's going to have to cost me because I have to go somewhere to get it faxed. So really on this call, I'm really just looking for guidance on who can I talk to? Or should I continue to wait for someone to get back with me on an appeal? Because my claim was denied for the water damages that I don't believe that BPU has properly proven that it was the tenant's fault.
So Ms. Easley, if I could, did you meet with our, with Ms. Burke and Mr. Robinette at the property? They go through some things with you and look at the property?
Yes, the other owner was there.
Okay. And so what what we can do, if you're having trouble emailing your other documents in, is I can get ahold of Ms. Burke tomorrow and see if they can't meet you or or come pick up the documents if that's easier for you.
That would be great.
Okay.
I would just want, I just want to be fair in putting that charge on someone. And I just kind of still believe it's a BPU charge because they never turned off the water.
Sure, and I I don't want to talk about your personal claim situation over over the the virtual meeting here. But I will have her to reach out to you tomorrow, come meet you and walk back through all of that with you as I understand what they're saying. But I want to make sure that when they meet you, you can understand what they're saying.
I do appreciate that.
Anything else, Ms. Easley?
No, I want to just thank you for your time. And then again, I know that everybody's getting into the internet and we're all doing things with AI. But there is nothing like a person to help you, especially with something like having lights on when you've got kids in the house and stuff like that. It is just extremely important. So that's all.
Thank you. Rob, is there any other hands raised?
Yes, sir, other hands are raised. Yes, I can. I'm going to enable your ability to speak. You'll need to unmute.
Can you hear us?
I can.
Would you please state your name and address for the record and you'll have five minutes?
This is Louise Lynch, Kansas City, Kansas. And I just want to thank you for continuing to try and improving the customer service for those of us that struggle to need it. But I also want to comment on the caller that just called in. She is a good person and helps many people across this country. She is also a public servant. And I know that what she says to be is always the truth. And I just hope that you all do reach out and help her. She has helped many people around this country and our community. And I have also benefited from her assistance. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Lynch. Rob, I don't see any other hands.
No, sir, no other hands raised.
Thank you. That will conclude the public comments section. Miscellaneous comments over to you.
Mister.
Oh, could you? Miss the sign up sheet.
And you need, in the future, you'll need to sign in or let us know ahead of time.
I apologize. I didn't sign in because I didn't want to speak. But after I heard some issues that I wanted to address, now I want to speak. Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can we get your name and address for the record?
My name is Fanny Hill. I live in Wyandotte County. And I have a, about customer service, our seniors, I deal with the seniors, I advocate for the seniors. And it's very hard on them not having the lobby open. I want to thank you, Senator, you heard my screaming, I heard the cry of the seniors. Because they don't have internet, they don't have computers, they still got flip phones. We don't want to lose those seniors. They're important too. They've been around, they old, they supported the community and they feel like the closing the lobby and our bill went up. We're not saving any money and we struggling just trying to get paperwork in. When when they come around and they have to send in paperwork is very difficult. And then when they have to go online and make appointment without a computer, that's difficult. I did that myself. And when they told me I could go online and make an appointment, that's what I expected to do. But I went online and I sit there thirty minutes trying to figure out how to set an appointment. And I discovered that you can't call in and make it. And I did, I called in, never got a call back for the appointment. They said, I never got a call. So I never got that appointment. So I appreciate the lobby being open and I think we have reached a compromise solution. It's not open all the time, it's by appointment. And they'll, they don't like that, they screamed about that. And I thought, okay, people, you got to compromise. If they're going to open it and put two or three people in there and let you make appointment, that's what I call coming to a mutual agreement. I got them to accept that. But if you close the lobby back because of people making appointments and don't show up, it's going to hurt those other, the seniors. So I'm asking you to please keep the lobby the way it is. I got them to where they okay with that. They understand you have to compromise and reach a mutual agreement. And for United Way, I have a few questions. Because how much is BPU donating to the United Way? I'd like to know that. And I'd like to know, Bill Johnson told me he worked there. I won't state the reason why he told me he was employed there. But he was employed there, so did they replace his position? If they did, what kind of salary are we paying for that person who replaced him? I'd like to hear the answers to those questions.
Well, I don't think Mr. Johnson is or ever was employed at the United Way. He did have a role as a board member there. And as far as any compensation that would have come from that, that wouldn't have come from BPU if it came at all. I see Mr. Jordan telling us that there is no compensation to be a board member on the United Way. As far as the lobby being the way it is today with a person there for appointments, we don't intend to change that. So that's going to stay that way.
Caller online, raise their hand if you're ready.
Sure.
Henderson, I'm going to enable your ability to speak. You'll need to unmute.
Okay, I'm Maydella Henderson and I'm sorry, I have a cold. And I know the time is short, but I just want to say something about flood insurance.
Ms. Henderson, could you give us your address, please?
Okay, twenty nine oh one North Sixty Ninth Street.
Thank you.
Uh, I had a problem with this last rain, it was a big rain and the water and everything came in the back of my home. I had homeowners insurance, they wouldn't do anything about that and the contents were damaged. And so I'm just, just really appalled because of the damage I got. But the contents were, they were supposed to be insured, but there was nothing they would do. I had other people that said that they had flood damage also. So I just don't know how to get someone to answer that. Kansas is known for floods and tornadoes, but those things are not covered. The tornado would be, but not the flood, the water damage.
Well, Ms. Henderson, as I understand, this dispute sounds like it's between you and your homeowners insurance. And we don't, we don't here at BPU give that type of advice.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, well, I mean, who can I contact? For, I guess maybe a probably a community development or something, someone?
So the Public Works at the Unified Government handles all of the stormwater issues in the city. You could contact, you could contact Unified Government Public Works and they could come out and and talk with you about storm runoff, storm drain and and if there's a problem in in your area.
Okay, and I was also told once before about this stormwater fee that we have to pay. And so I'm being charged for that too. So I don't really understand that, being charged for that fee. I guess it's the the water and stuff that's measured, how much you, the water you get on your property and stuff. So I think I kind of want to, you know, talk to someone about that.
So the the stormwater fee or charge is a charge of the Unified Government. We simply just collect it on their behalf. You would have to reach out to Public Works again about your stormwater charges.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, seeing no other hands, we will turn to miscellaneous comments. The only thing I really have tonight is just again to thank the team for the work we've done. Strategic plan, you've got the community impact report in front of you. You know, Water got all of their inspection work on their hydrants done prior to October first. Fantastic job to to Steve and his team. Nairman Plant, Don and Don and his team are continuing to do great work down there. And we we were in the community quite a bit, quite a few community meetings in September. And one that stuck out is the PAL. We went, the executive team went to the PAL last week and we served dinner to the the kids and the the PAL team members, volunteers, whoever they are. And that's, that's a great thing, see all those kids together doing something after after hours in the evening with their time, something productive. And so I just want to take a minute to thank, thank the executive team that attended that and helped us out with that. It was, it was really a great event.
And PAL stands for Please Athletic.
Please Athletic League, yes, yep. You know, and then lastly, we we talked a lot about collaboration in the in the work session. And and we did have some friends, I'll call them up here from Memphis by Gas and Water, people that we've, I've been able to develop relationships with through my involvement at APPA. And so they came up and did a fantastic job. We assembled all of the water and electric field crews out at George Mine in the city. Again, collaborative, they they let us use the George Mine Center for free. And we're thankful to them for that. And Darren McNew, thank you for your presentation. We hosted the Argon National Laboratory here. A lot of their folks talking about weather and system resiliency. And so it was a great event. Talked to the KMU folks today. Greg tells me that this this event that we held was the the best attended one they've had. So we're continuing to reach out, we're continuing to do things in our community and beyond. And so thanks to the team for everything we're doing to to support that. That's all I have.
Next is board comments. We'll start down on my far left with Rose. Do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have any comments this evening.
Mary?
I'd just like to thank the United Way for coming to give the presentation. I appreciate that and a gobby to your people. And I know I call you with a million customer complaints or can you solve this frequently? So I appreciate your help always.
Mr. Parker?
Appreciate all the presentations. Thank you, Todd and the United Way for the great work you all are doing. I, you know, Mr. Gorman spoke to some of the needs of our community and kind of challenging times with the, some of the other landscapes going on. I just want folks to know, we we hear you on that. We appreciate public comments from from all the folks bringing those concerns. And I appreciate our customer care team trying to find new proactive ways of meeting people's needs. You know, I don't know that the public utility is ever going to be the whole solution to any of those issues. But I I hope you feel from the board here and the leadership team that's in place that we are trying to be a part of that solution. And Jeremy, I say this every time, but I really appreciate the focus you guys have had on getting out, building those connections in the community, being proactive about learning those needs and finding creative ways to meet the needs of the community and for our, all the folks on the BPU team to feel a part of that and the importance of the work that we do in in everyone's lives. So thank you for that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate all the presentations and certainly we we are grateful for the work that BP is doing, BP is doing, particularly our leadership team. Ty, thank you for coming. But know that a lot of your concerns have to do with the decisions of your commissioners. And they will be making a lot of decisions when it comes to any potential data center in the area. And know that the BPU has already been proactive in assuring that we maintain a safe environment for the residents here and we'll continue to to move in that direction. But we certainly appreciate your advocacy and for the information that the Sierra Colos provide to help us in our decision making process. Thank you all again for your presence tonight.
Senator?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll mind that.
Okay, like you should, bring it on home, okay. I too want to echo the presentations that were brought, both in the work session and also here tonight. And for those that were bringing points, inspiration for what the utility is. A couple of years ago, November twenty twenty three, I gave kind of an update in terms of what good it is to have an advocate elected to the board. And in fact, it's part of our minutes from the December twenty twenty three meeting that I just kind of said, well, what do we have by way of an advocate? So one month earlier, I just want to briefly recap the advocacy that we've embraced and that I've been glad to be a part of while I've been here. First and foremost, with the my push for successfully having the audio visual. First and foremost, with the, my push for successfully having the audio visual that we do. Believe it or not, they didn't televise or have the interactivity that we have with the raised hand feature where one could actually express and be here. And I pushed for that with our previous GM. And finally, we have it here and I'm pleased to see that here. As I'm glad to know back then, as we said, a couple of board members will remember the push that we had for cold weather rule. It was part of your advocacy prior to my being here, but we pulled that through and how the cold weather rule has allowed people to not be disconnected during the more troubling heat or cool of the season. I'm proud of that. I'm proud to be the one to keep pushing to open up the lobby. And I know I'm alone in that, but that's been something that was recounted two years ago, November 2023. And as long as I'm here, I will continue to see that we have the direct access to live out to our mission statement that says to focus on the needs of our customers. That's primarily why I hope we should have people that are here and a part of that. And we have what's called now, because of some advocacy side in Topeka, where our policies are reviewed with an internal one, our community. And our policy review committees have been established where citizens, ratepayers are participating in some of the decisions that this board makes and that will affect our community. And I'm proud to have been that advocate to bring that there and we no longer. And also the advocate to segregate from the bill, the UG charges, like the pilot, the other fees, taxes, some people call them. And hopefully to get to the point where we have that. That was my idea. It's one that came out of Topeka. And that is an advocacy that I will continue to push for because it's about access. It's about transparency. I know I'm a month earlier, but let me remind that I don't support rate increases. I didn't vote for it before. I was in the minority then. I think only two of us didn't. And it was implemented anyway. But everything's going up. And I'm sure at some point in time, they'll be trying to find a way to reconcile the cost of inflation on everything and how we on the board, working with the community, engagement committees that we have, policy, and with our team, with the general manager, look at how we can get better bang from our buck without having to extract more for the electricity that we consume or our water. Don't know if I would ever vote for a rate increase. I do think there's room for improvement still within our budget. All due respect to the team. But at this point in time, that's not something I'm prepared to do. Finally, Mr. President and others, you know, accountability is crucial. I want to say that I've been heartened. I really have. I'm grateful. I really do for people that know David Haley in this community by the prayers, the calls, stopping me on the street during this particular week in particular. They know who I am. You know who I am. This community does for 30 years. And I want to remind everybody of an adage I didn't make up, but I live by, regardless of what we're surrounded by. Know who you are, know what you stand for. Do what you say you're going to do when you get there. And when they go low, remain positive, focused. Stay high, stay up, stay positive. The BPU is truly the jewel of Wyandotte County. It's so great that we own our utility. We have to get it better managed. We have to get it better accountable. We have to get it better accessible. But it is the best asset that the Unified Government of Wyandotte County holds. And I know we're at odds. I know that we have some cleanup to do. But let's not go low, even if they do. Let's remain engaged. Let's benchmark the progress that we've made and remain committed as a unified community for the betterment of that which we have right here, all of us together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Just to kind of to, to wrap up, I'd like to thank everybody that, that was here, the customer care team. The presentation was, was great and it showed a lot, I think, a lot of improvement, a lot of areas that we're trying to, to excel in and that we will. But there's also a ways to go and I think the team knows that and they're going to continue to work hard to refine the lobby, to refine the telephone calls, to do those revisions that need to be done to make things even better. So thank you to the team. Thank you to the customers that, you know, come out and, and voice their opinions. We appreciate it. And thank you all and have a good evening and a safe evening. Thank you. With that, I yes, I would, with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Wait a second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Rule call, please.
Rule call. Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney, Henry?
Aye.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.